Well, it's 5:40. We'll get started. Hopefully, the Vice Mayor will join us in a few minutes. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like me to do the roll call?
Yeah, roll call, please.
Councilmember Singz.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Paul.
Here.
And Mayor Scharf.
Here. Okay, so, um, what, first thing we're doing in this special meeting is selecting a Mayor and Vice Mayor. There'll be a time for public comments later, uh, and if any mo— but if any member of the public wants to speak specifically about the nomination of the Mayor and Vice Mayor, you can fill out a card now. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak about that? You can come forward without—without filling out a card. Okay. Seeing no one, um, the first thing we'll do is have nominations for the Mayor. So, do I hear any nominations for Mayor?
I'll, uh, I'll nominate Mayor Scharf for another term as Mayor in the upcoming year.
I'll second that.
All right. Are there any other nominations for Mayor? Okay. So, if we can vote with your lights for, uh, Mayor, I will accept the nomination.
And the motion carries with Chow absent.
Okay. Next is Vice Mayor. So, are there nominations for Vice Mayor?
I'll nominate, uh, Councilman Paul.
Uh, I'll second.
Uh, thank you. I'll accept the nomination.
Okay. Please vote for Vice Mayor.
And that motion carries with Chow absent.
Great. Um, so if the Clerk can now change around the nameplates.
Actually, let's go ahead and do the—
Wait, you want to swear in first?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Well, uh, if I could ask the newly-elected Mayor to the front of the stage for his oath.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, please state your name.
Aye.
Aye, Stephen Scharf.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
For the city of Cupertino.
For the city of Cupertino.
Okay, congratulations.
Hey, thank you.
And I now ask the newly-elected Vice Mayor to come to the front of the dais.
Sure, of course. Thank you. I'd like to ask my wife Sharon and our kids to join me. Thanks.
Please, please, raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Darcy Paul.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
For the city of Cupertino.
For the city of Cupertino.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, yeah, I don't think we need to change the seats right now. Just the— Right, so you don't need to change nameplates or anything, right? We'll do that.
Uh, we will have the newly-printed names on them for the next meeting.
Okay.
Since we're not changing any order.
So, can I make a comment?
Sure.
So sorry that I'm late. Traffic was terrible driving from Mofitas. And I'm—I'm glad—I was hoping that I would be the one nominating Stephen to be the Mayor and Darcy to be the Vice Mayor. I'm glad that it happened without me anyway. And I think I have expressed this to Stephen and many people, that this is my first year as a council member, and I think I'm not ready to be a Mayor. There is just so much ceremonial responsibilities to—as a Mayor, that I would like to take the time to, um, to learn my—my way. And also, I—I have a lot of other things that I would like to do, so I need the time. And I think Stephen deserves another term to be the Mayor, because he didn't get to be Vice Mayor. So, he does deserve another term as a Mayor. So, that's, uh, well-deserved, and I'm really glad that Darcy is our Vice Mayor again. So, let's switch seats.
Sure, you can switch if you want to do that.
Congratulations. Uh, I just want to take a—a few brief moments to thank Vice Mayor Chow for all of her dedication to the community this year. Um, I—I haven't seen anyone put more hours and work harder and delve, uh, more, um, more—more diligently into the issues. And I think she brings up a lot of good points, albeit at the, uh, very late hours of the night. But I think that—that's part of our responsibilities, and thank you for keeping us, um, on that—on that track with regard to, um, having a really, uh, good, faithful, and, uh, full of integrity type of approach to the various issues we face. So, thanks very much.
Great.
Maybe I can—
Sure.
Say a word or two. Um, I really want to thank Mayor Scharf for guiding our city for the last year. He's done, in my view, a phenomenal job, really focused on the residents. And, uh, the leadership, being new, we have a lot to learn. Steve has done an outstanding job. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow has done a phenomenal job. Again, her dedication is just unmatched, the number of—of things she's able to accomplish. So, thank you, uh, Mayor Scharf. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Chow. And I really look forward to supporting Darcy in the new role for Vice Mayor. Um, it's without question that he—he has what it takes. So, thank you, Darcy.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, and I look forward to offloading all the ceremonial stuff to Darcy.
Great.
So, the last year, I—I recently talked to, um, Vice, uh, Councilmember Willie, and he had the same frustration that I had when I started. Everything seems to take so long to get anything done. Uh, you can be elected, and then eight years later, if you're reelected, something that got started is still—still not finished. And I think that's a frustration we all share. But I think we did accomplish quite a bit in the last four years. We got the Via Shuttle started recently. We finished the Veranda project, and it's fully occupied. We are finally moving forward with the library program room, design and construction. Uh, we passed the ordinance on vaping. And of course, you know, the big issue that I get taught—asked about almost on a daily basis, no matter where I am, you know, in the Bay Area or even in the world, is what's happening with Valco. And, you know, that's a frustration we all share. We all want to move forward with that. We would like something to replace the mall, especially now that it's—it's almost completely gone. And we are looking forward and working with, um, the property owners to see what we can do to get what's best for Cupertino, um, even if we have to do some compromises that not everybody, uh, might be completely on board with. Uh, that—that's just part of the job, is to, uh, make these compromises to move forward. So, with that, um, is anyone—does anyone from the public wish to speak before we adjourn for the reception? Yes, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Anjali Hauser, the CEO for the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. And first of all, I wanted to thank Mayor Stephen Scharf and Vice Mayor Liang Chow for a wonderful year of 2019. And thank you for leading the city and working so well with the Chamber. And secondly, I would like to congratulate again Mayor Stephen Scharf for leading us again in 2020, and looking forward to continuing our work with Vice Mayor Darcy Paul, as we have done so many years in the past. And we are so glad that the city and the Chamber work well together, and look forward to continuing that friendship and leadership. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anjali. I feel very protected here. And I have to say, I—I spoke—I was at my daughter's school where she's student teaching, and they—they asked me—one of the kids said, "Do you have a bodyguard?" And I said, "No," but now—now maybe I do.
We're always here for you, sir. Uh, Mayor Scharf, on behalf of Sheriff Smith, who unfortunately couldn't make it today, she's out of town, and all the men and women of the Senate Clerk of County Sheriff's Office, we congratulate you for being elected Mayor a second term. Uh, we've had such a great working relationship this last year, and really the last 50, whatever years we've been providing services to the city of Cupertino. We make a commitment to you today to continue that service. We look forward to working with you. Thank you for your leadership. Uh, as you know, we've done, uh, a lot of great work getting those truck drivers to move out of the bike lanes, right?
Yes, thank you.
Right? And the only reason we're able to do that is because of your leadership. Uh, please do not hesitate to contact me. Let's get those trucks moved. Let's protect our students that are riding the bicycles, and even our adults that are riding bicycles. That's why we're here. And we look forward to continuing that—that relationship. Vice Mayor Chow, thank you for your leadership this past year. Um, we've had a lot of great interactions. We've done a lot of great things for the city. Uh, just because you are now a council member, it doesn't mean you can't reach out to me at any point. That goes to anybody on the dais. Uh, we look forward to working with you this next year as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Welcome, Munni.
Good evening. Uh, sorry, I didn't fill in the card. Uh, my name is Munni Madipatla. I'm a Cupertino resident, so, um, I just want to congratulate, you know, the council and the Mayor and the Vice Mayor, newly-elected and, you know, and, uh, ex-Vice Mayor. You guys are awesome, and I don't think, you know, we could have asked for a better council than what we have here. It's a lot of work. I know it's a lot of commitment. And so, thank you for, uh, Stephen Scharf for, you know, taking on to do the second term, and Darcy Paul for stepping up to be a Vice Mayor again, and, you know, possibly Mayor in the future. And thank you for your services, Liang and, you know, John. So, I mean, you guys are awesome. Thank you. I know it takes a lot of work. I admire you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Munni. Welcome. Welcome, Claire. Claire is our honorable librarian.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and I'm pleased I get to say that for another year, because I enjoy teasing you, um, about being Mayor, since we've been friends now for a while. But congratulations to you, as well as to Vice Mayor Paul. I look forward to continuing to work with you in this upcoming year. And I'd just like to express my thanks to council as well for their continued support of our library. We are looking forward to moving ahead along with the city with the library expansion, and we appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Claire. Anybody else? Okay, so, um, with that, we can—oh, oh, here comes Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer. I won't time you.
Sorry, I was trying to do the protocol here, walk around the back. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I want to congratulate, um, our new Mayor and our new Vice Mayor, and thank our past Mayor and Vice Mayor, uh, for all their work and service to us, and thank all the council members for all their hard work. The—this is sometimes a thankless job. You're here till four, five o'clock in the morning. Your families have—make a great sacrifice also. I think we need to remember that public service is something that is a very, very important thing in the United States. And we—all of you should be commended for all the work that you've done, all the hours that you have put in. And I'm looking forward to a great year, and thanks for all your, um, good deeds and good work. And when you're here at 4:00 AM in the morning, we know your families are wondering where you are, but all you have to do is look on TV, and that's where you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we still can't fix Highway 17. Anybody else? Hey, seeing no one else, we can adjourn the special meeting and move to the reception out in the lobby. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. I think we will do the Pledge of Allegiance again, for those of you that were not here for the earlier meeting. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Madam City Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Singz.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here. Okay, we have no ceremonial matters and presentations today. Uh, Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number five, under consent, can be tabled. Um, there is a—a vacancy for the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. However, there is, uh, alternates already in place for that, so this item was inadvertently put on the agenda.
Okay, very good. So, be—
Oh, sorry.
Item five is postponed. It's the, um, issue of the Parks and Rec, uh, Commission, and the member that resigned in the reappointment. We already have a process for, uh, for the alternate to be offered the open—open position.
Bicycle pedestrian.
Right. If not, we would consider it in January.
So, we don't—okay?
Right.
So, we don't terminate it? Okay?
Okay, before I move on to oral, I neglected, when I was talking earlier, to talk about one of our biggest accomplishments in the past, uh, four years, and that was hiring an awesome new city manager and city attorney. So— That—if everyone knew how—how much time we put into that, you would, uh—you'd be amazed. And—and we ended up with, uh, an awesome team, so I'm very glad about that. Uh, now we are on to oral communications. If you could fill out a blue card if you wish to speak, although not required. I have three cards right now. Ignatius Ding, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Ignatius.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ignatius Ding, 42 years resident in Cupertino. Uh, first, a congratulation, Mayor and Vice Mayor, for another term. Uh, I want to speak as a subject of—of a request, which I will follow up with an email to city manager and the city council later. But I want to point out, uh, the city owns properties, including many rows. One of them is the Wolf Row, and North Wolf Row in particular. That includes the land and also the space over it. There is a overpass used to connect the two buildings across—between the two sides of Wolf Row, uh, across the two parcels at the formal Valco Fashion Park. Uh, I wanted to bring up, uh—to bring to your attention, one, the property owner of the Valco side submit a SB 35 application. The formal planner under the formal director and formal city manager, that's not reflection on the current staff, but the calculation was not verified to make sure the space over the Wolf Row, the overpass, is not being included or converted from retail space to residential space, which is violation of the easement, which is documented in the city record. So, it is important for the city to recognize this prompt in the proposal. In fact, there's a court hearing coming up on the 19th of this month. I'm requesting the city actually put in writing, file a legal brief to notify this—the judge, presiding judge of this prompt, because the calculation of the residential area is—is—is in error, including this overpass as a part of the residential, uh, uh, space. So, it is important, because we cannot allow this be—this—otherwise, the encroachment of the city property, it becomes a permanent. That will be a ma—major mistake for the future of the city. And also, the calculation, uh, in error changed the—the landscape of the application. So, I will writing this up, and just—I—I wanted to request and get your attention on this prompt. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ignatius. And the city attorney and city manager, um, can look into this. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, and congratulations to all of you. Um, I hope you had a good Thanksgiving. I'm Connie Cunningham. I'm speaking for myself only. I am with the Housing Commission, and I've been a homeowner here in, um, Cupertino for 32 years. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to talk about an emergency housing ordinance for Cupertino, because we must act as swiftly as the landlords who are raising their rents. AB 1482, the new California law that imposes a rent cap of 5% plus CPI or 10%, whichever is less, and also implements just cause protections, doesn't become effective until January. I note that Cupertino does not have a municipal code that protects tenants. I support Working Partnerships and CFA, two groups that are advocating that local governments enact or update emergency retroactive housing ordinances to protect vulnerable tenants who are at risk of being evicted from their homes prior to the law becoming effective. Over 35% of Cupertino residents were tenants in 2010. Although some may object to emergency measures as a general rule in order to allow smooth transitions, in fact, many landlords are taking emergency actions now to evict tenants, so that they can raise rents before the law becomes effective. We must act with like swiftness to help our neighbors. For example, my neighborhood was 100% owned by families when built in the 1960s. However, in this past decade, since 2010, many of these homes have been purchased by speculators and have become rentals. The renters have all been good neighbors. It would break my heart to see any of them evicted, because the speculator wants to raise rents before the law changes. Please help my neighbors. Please help all our Cupertino neighbors by directing the city manager to prepare a municipal code that protects the people of Cupertino for your immediate signature. I realize this may require a special meeting to put on the agenda, thus the imperative to make the new municipal code retroactive. Thank you for your time.
Okay. And—and I would point, AB 1482, the rent limits are retroactive to March. It's just the eviction protections that don't kick in until January 1st. And—and they don't—it doesn't apply to single-family homes, so it wouldn't have any effect either way on, um, rental houses. It would affect apartment—
All the apartment complexes.
—buildings, or apartment complexes.
Thank you for—
Okay, thank you. And next is—
Can I ask the staff, have we received any, um, any request from residents who might need help with this issue?
None that I'm aware of.
Um, yeah, I'm not aware of any, so...
Right, yeah, I know some cities, I've heard reports of blanket evictions prior to, um, December 31st, so they could raise the rent back up to market rate, and then the people could come back. But I don't—yeah, so, it—it is an issue. Uh, Lisa Warren, followed by Neil McClintock. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Um, okay. Easements are money. By that, I'm referring to the fact that easements have a monetary value. We see disputes over projects and properties due to easements, and there's a reason for that. The Valco Shopping District site included public access roadways that city staff surrendered to the public—to the property owner for exclusive development use when it approved the Valco Town Center SB 35 application project. City staff had converted public roadway access to investment real estate for the benefit of the Valco property owner. Some would call this a land grab given support. I question whether members of staff who did approve this, they're no longer here, actually had the authority to do so. The roadway easements were never cleared or changed by city council, which is apparently required by law. Over time, there have been several references to the Subdivision Map Act, including whether Valco SB 35 project application approval was properly approved, given the tentative subdivision map that it included. I believe there may have been multiple versions and changing easement locations. I remember hearing that some easements would never—would need relocation, and complications with utilities and underground parking may exist. I had hoped to submit, um, plan-set drawings that you already have, specifically from the SB 35 Development Application Sheet numbers, P 0305, P 0306, P 0307. There's different revisions of them. I couldn't print them out, because the—the—they're too big a files, and my printer was getting stuck at 40%. But I do have this partial, and I'm going to hand it to Grace, um, partially legible version of 30306, where it shows specifically, and probably one of the biggest deals, these two sections of road that currently belong to the city, or did, until they were given to Valco property owners as part of their application. So, I just would like that on the record, and I'd like some discussion about that at some point, and hopefully some help from the city attorney. Um, also, just—this is switching gears. Previous, uh, oral communications, I've asked for a couple of agenda items to be submitted, and I just wanted to repeat those and see if anything's happening. The housing bill discussions, um, to try to take action to protect what we can protect, based on what had been approved by our governor. And also, R1 improvements to the municipal code related to privacy planting guidelines and balconies. Is that my time? Got 15 seconds? Um, and then also, parkland distribution citywide based on resident population. I don't believe, um, our outgoing Vice Mayor was ever given what she wanted on that, and I kind of like the same thing. So, that's just a reminder.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
The last card I have is Neil McClintock. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what Connie said. I understand that you haven't received any official correspondences related to recent evictions or surges in rent gouging, but nonetheless, I still think it's important to consider that even if there is one renter or a group of tenants who are protected by an emergency ordinance, that I think it's worth pursuing. There is an entire month left, and within that month, anything could happen. I think a lot of landlords are catching wind. There have been reports in Sunnyvale, just down the street, that there's been a huge surge in evictions. A lot of tenants are reaching out for help. And so I think it's important to consider that, especially during this holiday season, that even if it's just a handful of people whose lives are uprooted as a result, that it's something that we should do, especially because it's going to be state law anyway in a month. We've seen similar cities throughout the Bay Area pass emergency ordinances, and other cities looking at them as well. So Sunnyvale actually today is voting on whether or not to consider an emergency tenant protection ordinance, and likely will vote yes. Palo Alto is looking at one as well. Menlo Park has passed one. So I think it's important that we look at it as well and do it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, City Council. Congratulations again on our new mayor and vice mayor, and thank all the city council members for all their service. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I just wanted to speak on the point that Lisa had brought up about having agenda, having an item on the agenda that is looking at the effect of the current housing bills that were signed this year by the governor, and what impact they're going to have on our city. We're talking about AB 68, 69, which are the ADU units. Junior ADUs have no restrooms in them. I mean, we're, we're looking at situations where we have unfathomable effects on our neighborhoods by these bills that were signed by our governor. SB 35, et cetera, we're living the repercussions of that signature by former Governor Brown, and we may be looking at the specter of SB 50 coming up again in January. I have it on good authority from relatives in Portland that there is an overabundance of housing available in Portland, yet in August of this year, the Oregon governor signed HB 2001, which is essentially SB 35, SB 50, all rolled into one. I spent the last five days in Eugene and Corvallis. Everyone is able to find jobs. Young people are renting homes with other people their age. It does not appear that those cities have out-of-control housing problems. There are people, young people, that are just beginning, that are doing what people normally do around universities. They have shared housing. I do not see any reason that HB, that SB, HB 2001 was signed for the whole state of Oregon. To me, this is irresponsible behavior by their governor. Yes, I have a lot of relatives in Oregon, a lot of family members that own homes. My niece is recently engaged in Portland, and she intends to buy a single-family home. She will probably be able to. The prices are not completely out of control in Oregon. A lot of Oregon is rural, and I cannot understand why their governor would have seen fit to sign something like HB 2001. Therefore, we, and their cities are struggling to try to put all this infrastructure in, and there is no money for utilities for all this new housing. I'm out of time, but I want to make sure that our city studies what could be happening to us. I so hope that our governor will not sign SB 50. We do not want to go down the road of Oregon, and there will be pushback in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Lastly, I have Kitty Moore. Welcome Kitty.
Good evening, City Council. I'm going to keep this really brief. I'm interested, I'm representing myself only, I'm interested in hearing more about what Connie and Neil were both speaking about with regards to having an emergency ordinance before the end of the year. If there's some way that you can have a study session and look at what the neighboring cities are doing, I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all the oral communications. We are on to reports by council and staff. Councilmember Willie, do you have any report on committee assignments?
So, no committee meetings this time, but I'll bring up what I had wanted to last time when we talked about, we could also speak about a study session or agenda items that we would be requesting. And so, we've already heard from several residents about the importance of homes, and Apple has created a plan, $2.5 billion for housing. Most of it's state initiatives, but there is $150 million for local housing projects, and I talked with Rod Deirdren about that, and he said it's for projects that would not be built if they didn't have some type of funding. And it's not about providing the land, but getting a project built that otherwise wouldn't be built at a particular site.
Okay, can I interrupt you? This is not committee assignments, and it's not agenda-ized, so-
No, but this is requesting.
Yeah, that would be later. That would be at the end of the meeting, when we request future agenda items.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we had talked about this last week.
And I think we've mentioned that if the council wanted to have an amendment to its resolution-
Right, we would have to amend our resolution.
... setting the order of the agenda, they could do that, but at this time, that hasn't been done yet, so the order of the agenda is set to have new agenda items happen at the end of the meeting. But council could consider amending that again to move the order around, but we have a-
Right, so we have to put that on the agenda to amend it.
Right.
Right, so we can do that at the next meeting.
But I guess for this meeting, we can vote to move that item earlier also, right? To move the agenda of discussion earlier.
That's right, it can be reorganized by majority vote at the-
Right, I mean, this is not a long meeting, so we can, we can keep it where it's supposed to be.
Today should be short, last time it was very long.
Okay. Councilmember Chow, do you have any committee assignment reports?
So, on the 20th of October, we have the Economic Development Committees, and there, we discussed the ADU, the REACH Code, and Kevin McClellan has showed serious concerns about potential impact on restaurant owners, because their profit margin is already very thin. So, that was discussed, and that's the main thing, yeah.
So, okay, how would that affect restaurant owners? Well, that's fine. Okay. The only thing I have was, I went to the disaster council meeting, they were appreciative of our council's action in approving hiring a new, what is the title?
Emergency Response Manager.
Right, Emergency Response Manager. We talked about what happened with the public safety power shut-off, and ways to improve how we, how we manage that in the future, and those were the main agenda items. And, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you. Vice Mayor-
Didn't we just, the revised budget last time included an emergency manager, right? It was already added in the budget.
Okay, Vice Mayor Paul.
Yes.
I held a town hall on November 20th, but that's not part of the committee assignments. I'll elaborate on some of the topics that were discussed there at that point. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Sinks.
Yeah, so, having reported out on the last Cities Association meeting, we had a robust discussion about transit and the principles that the cities would like to advocate for in any future funding measure, and we rather liked the coalition statement that Transform and all put together and directed city managers to consider helping us formulate that, and then we would bring that back to the Cities Association and councils to take a look at. So again, this is similar to write the letter that Alameda wrote, somewhat critical of the faster proposal, but trying to clarify what things we were for, as opposed to just what we might be against. We also had a discussion about what Silicon Valley Clean Energy and others were participating in with regard to changing ownership of PG&E to some kind of public entity, whether like the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District, or more like a cooperative, as Mayor Licardo has been arguing. So, we got a vote with, it was all yeses with a couple of abstentions, people that didn't understand the issue, to, to support the effort in some public, to support that effort of PG&E becoming a, in some form, a public rather than a shareholder-owned utility, and to pursue that, have SVC pursue that. I know several, since we met last met, several cities have also been aggressive in adopting long-reach codes, like Mountain View, they finalized theirs, and several others have. So we also talked about that, at our SVC board meeting, and finally, today, after many years of work, the Air District, along with the EPA, sent out notice that we'd resolved a longstanding legal dispute with Lehigh Cement, and this affects cement plants in the states of Indiana, Iowa, Maryland, New York, Pennsylvania, Alabama, and on behalf of this Air District, the Air District itself is also, was also a plaintiff. So we've announced a consent decree that will substantially mitigate the some 400 tons of particulate matter that come out of the stack every year. We talked about this at the town hall in September, and so, in the next 12 months, action will need to be taken under this agreement to put continuous emissions monitoring for NOx and SOx in place, and then substantial SOx mitigation to reduce those 400 tons. And I don't know yet exactly how much that is, but it's, this is a big win for public health, for our residents, and frankly, everybody in the South Bay, because at the 300 feet at which that pollution is emitted, it swirls around and a lot of it gathers in East San Jose and other, you know, really impoverished communities. So, at the Air District, we're delighted. It took, it's a strange bedfellows in cooperating with this administration's EPA and these five states, but despite it all, after months, and actually frankly, some years of delay, we got this settlement, which is good for everybody. That's my report.
Great. And when it comes to agenda items, I think you can suggest discussion of faster Bay Area and of the PG&E idea of, that Mayor Licardo was advocating for. Okay, we are on to consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I have a committee-
Oh, I'm sorry, staff reports, okay.
That's okay. Just to follow up Rod's action, the Cities Association action, the city managers to come up with a set of guidelines with regard to transportation, mostly tenants in a way. So the city managers met this, literally this morning for, yeah, we did, and got pretty far with defining what we think are probably our top five tenants or guidelines with regard to transportation. And then, we are working on a final, we will meet one more time, and then we'll pass it back to the Cities Association for consideration.
So, I mean, from my perspective, I would welcome either before or after that comeback, right? Some guidance from the council on what you think we should do with this, it could be before or after, but, you know, I'll leave it at that.
Excuse me. Okay, we are on to consent. I understand, Councilmember Chow, you have-
Yeah, so I will recuse.
On, well, not on the whole consent, just on-
I think I'll just recuse on the whole thing, right? Yeah. So you can vote together.
We can just split out the vote on number four.
Right, we can split it out. And I do have someone that wants to pull number four anyway, so we're not gonna, yeah.
Do you want to do a quick-
Can I move the consent calendar tabling number five, accepting four for now?
Sure.
So that would be, I'm sorry, yeah.
Two, three-
Two, three, and six.
A second. Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so, we'll wait for the vice mayor, I mean, Councilmember Chow to leave the Okay, is there a staff report on this item, or should we just move straight to public comment?
We do not have a staff report. This is to declare properties a potential nuisance due to the presence of weeds, and set the hearing date where the determination on nuisance will be made.
Okay, great. I have one speaker card here. Brent Bardslay, welcome. Is Brent here?
He's here.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm Brent Bardslay, 10408 Menhart, and 35-year resident of Cupertino. Believe it or not, this is my 10th appearance this year, before the council, which wouldn't be that remarkable, except that I, in the prior 34 years, I never even attended a meeting. So you guys have my attention. I'm speaking on the WE debatement issue. If you remember last spring, or I think it was in June, the council ordered the WE debatement person to remove my name from the WE debatement list, and to then inspect my program the following spring, which would be this May. As you can see, he has not removed my property from the WE debatement list. So, it's possible this is a clerical error, I'm not sure, but here is the, a copy of the item from the council meeting on 5/21. Notice it says, "Took no action but to wait." I believe the wording was garbled a little bit, but "Took no action but to wait another year for the parcel at 10408 Menhart Lane." So, to wait another year. That was the decision that the council made on May 21st. It's only December, it hasn't been another year, right? Now, I, oh, here we go. I wrote a note to the council, which you should have all received. on, let's see if I can get this up here. On June 28th, hopefully you all received this, I said, "Many thanks again to the City Council for continuing your prior unanimous decision last February." In other words, last February, you also ordered my name be removed from the list, but he put it back on. Then you again ordered it be removed from the list. My property is kind of like a bad penny. It keeps coming back. May I continue?
Sure, continue.
"And leaving my property removed from the county weed agent's list. The agent has the opportunity to instantiate the process anew on their May 2020 inspection, should they see fit, as applies to all properties in the city. In my opinion, your decision is an excellent example of common sense prevailing at the city government. I also congratulate the council and city staff for your sense of proportion in quickly addressing the tall weeds abiding residential property wood fences along Red Nar, Raperian Corridor." Well, that has nothing to do with this meeting, so I won't talk about that. But you did do a very good job about getting those weeds behind this building removed. So, so what, I don't have a current picture of my property because I wasn't expecting this, but I did take, I do, I did look through my photographs, and here's a copy I took on July 17th, soon after the Fourth of July. As you can see, there are very few, if any, weeds on the property. And I think Councilwoman Chow, where's Councilwoman Chow?
She had to recuse herself on this item.
On this item?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know why. The Councilwoman Chow asked that the, I had, I had kind of a wooden gate positioned alongside my utility trailer there, and Councilwoman Chow asked that I remove that, which I did. I was saving that wood because it was, turned out it was heart, it's original to the house, so it's from the 1950s, and it was construction, or it was heart redwood quarter son, which it turned out to be very good for some other projects I was working on. So anyway, that, that wood is removed, and I believe that was the only specific request that was made. That has been removed. There's, you know, I have a very extensive garden, both in the backyard and in the front yard. So there's weeds coming and going all the time, and I'm pulling them and shredding them and throwing them away as needs be. But as you can see, the, there are, no, there's not an unusual number of weeds on this property.
Okay, yeah, thank you. We...
So, so what I'm asking is that you remove my name from the list.
Right.
And, and just indicate to the, to the weed abatement agents that he always has the option this May of re-inspecting the property. And if he has anything to say, then he can, then he can do that at the next opportunity, which for the May inspection, that would be a year from now.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. So Madam City Attorney, can we discuss this? Is this a clerical error, or why is the name still on there?
So I'm, I'm just going back over the minutes to confirm that. What I believe happened is that it was at the actual hearing to declare the property a nuisance and to collect, and to, you know, order the abatement to be done by the county, that it was removed from that list.
Right.
And so the county did not proceed with the abatement program from, from last year. That does not mean, I believe, that it would be removed from consideration by the city's program for this upcoming year, which is what this process is to begin. And my understanding is that, that this list is based on properties that have been identified in past years. And so this is not, being on this list does not mean that the property will be declared a nuisance, or there will not be further inspections, that that determination will happen at the, at the hearing that is being set today, and would be an opportunity for you to come back and protest. So what the city decided last year was not to move forward with the abatement program for last year, but what's happening now is we're now starting a new abatement cycle for this year. And so if you wanted to protest your house being, or your property being included on the list for this year, then the time to do that would be, well, could be now, but it would be at the hearing that's being set. And there will be further opportunities for, for you to clear the site or to protest the declaration of nuisance from the site.
So if I understand, the county, once you get on that list, how many years are you on that list?
Three years.
Your three years. So that's, I guess there's no way for the city to take someone off that list?
Yeah. And what the, what the city did, I believe, was, was removed from the list of, you know, of the actual abatement that the county was going to do. They say, okay, we're not going to order the county to abate your property last year, but the issue, the county still needs to confirm that the, that the weeds have been evaded in this upcoming year, which is the process we're starting.
And the county would not abate it again if no weeds are found?
That's right.
You wouldn't be on the list for abatement anyway. But I guess we don't have the power to take you off that three-year list.
I suppose the city could do it at this time and say that we don't want the county to look at this property any further for this upcoming year, but I would advise against that.
So what year is this? Is this the second or the third year?
I, I don't know for this.
Okay.
Excuse me, if I may interject.
Sure.
In, last February was when you held the meeting, was to discuss whether the property should be on the list or not, right? That was from the inspection of the prior May. Last February, by unanimous decision, you ordered that it be removed from the list, completely removed from the list. This is not open to debate. This is on the record. So the...
So I, I thought we removed it from the list of properties that the county would go out and abate the weeds.
Last year.
Last year, but not the list that they maintain where they go out and see each year if they, if they will abate the weeds.
My understanding is that in February, you asked that the agent completely remove it, the property from the weed abatement list, because you had ruled that it complied with the, with the weed abatement policies. However, you asked that the agent inspect the property again in the spring and come back to the council if, if he thought that it needed more work. And, and he did do that. Then I came to that meeting and, and showed you my evidence why it didn't need more work. You agreed with me and ordered him to remove the property from the list again. The, the issue of, of, the actual abatement process was never, was never reached where he had ordered his men to come and remove anything from the property or any, do any work on the property. All, all of the topics that we've been discussing are whether my property should be on the list at all. And you've twice ordered it to be removed from the list, and now it has appeared back on the list. So I'm asking the council to simply order it removed from, from his list. And he always has the option. He'll be inspecting my property in May, like he inspects every single property in the city, presumably. And if he wants to put it back on the list in May, he can do that. There's no downside to my proposal, and it's consistent with what the council has already ordered twice.
So, I mean...
I'd like to say something.
Sure, go.
So my understanding of this process, I've been doing this, this is, I'm guessing, my ninth year. At this time every year, we take the county's list, we put notice out to everybody. This is part of the cycle that runs through 2020. So this is next year, effectively, right? And as, with the text that you put up there, what, what it basically said was, you're getting relief for this, this last year. This is a new year. You're on the list for inspection purposes. If you weren't on the list now, we couldn't take action later. So this is part of a series of steps that we go through every year, and I would like to move this item. It's, you know, this is basic fairness.
Yeah.
We can't treat everybody especially, and if they're on the list, yeah, we have a process for this.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that it's two lists. It's the lists, the list that you get put on for inspection, and then the other list, which you got taken off of, is the list where the county would come in and abate the weeds for you. So...
And I've confirmed that it was the abatement list that, that council ordered removal from.
Right, the abatement list is what we ordered the removal from.
Well, I'd like to go on the record and provide my comment, and that is, the houses in Rancho specifically like this one, they're a mere 50 feet wide, and 20 feet of that is the driveway. That is it. This, this resident has had to come here 10 times now for something that is clearly not a fire hazard. If, if there's something that we can do to make his life easier, I think we should do it.
So should we do that for every resident in the city that wants to come and complain? I mean, really? Give me a break. That's not fair. How can that possibly be fair?
Having, having 35 feet and having to come to this meeting 10 times, is that fair? Think about it. Your house is so much bigger than 50 feet.
We're talking about weed abatement.
Man, I'm torn here because I remember you showing us the pictures and explaining what each plant was, which was impressive. And it's clear that, you know, I think one of the neighbors who complained, not because of the weeds, but because of other, you know, items on your property.
I'm not aware of any neighbor complaint. There's been no evidence introduced of any neighbor complaint. No neighbor in my entire 35 years of living in Cupertino has ever complained to me about weeds or even mentioned weeds on my property.
No, no, I'm not talking about weeds. Well, we don't, you know, these complaints are always confidential, but I thought that you had mentioned there was some issue with other items in your yard, not, not related to, not related to weeds.
Oh, well, I did receive a neighbor complaint one time about birds. Would you like to hear about that?
No, no, that's fine.
A neighbor complained that the birds that were landing in my tree and were flying over her car.
Anyway, I mean, personally, I think, you know, we should let this run the cycle. If the weeds are abated, your house will be off the list and not, not be put back on in, in one year. And, so...
So I do think we need to vote on the total item that's in front of us. Unfortunately, I think it's, it's, it's not making our resident, you know, happy, and, and I think that's very unfortunate. So...
I'll just, let me, let me second and make my comment. I think it would, it would behoove everyone to go back to the eight-point list and read it. I think there's a, a bit of a lack of transparency as to step one right now, because essentially, step one is county goes out, makes an inspection, determines which properties are going to be on this list. And there are some that are carried over from being on the list for a set number of years, but then there are some apparently that are added to the list. So we don't really have transparency as to why particular properties were added or when they were added. And I think it would be really useful to be able to get some feedback from county as to when they made the inspection, what they're looking for, and just get a little bit more granular detail, because I am sympathetic with your situations, but I think that we really don't have any kind of basis to remove your property from the list right now, because we just don't know when county looked at it, what they were looking at, why they made that determination. Because based upon what we're looking at here, it looks like that they went out there sometime, and it's a really broad, broad swath, it's somewhat, sometime between June and November, they looked at it and went, you know, we're going to put this on the initial list. The actual list where we would then declare a nuisance after that meeting would be on January 21st. Right now, this is a preliminary step. So I, I just don't see where we have a basis of removing any particular parcel, especially given that the fact, the fact that the county representative is not here tonight. So, you know, for that reason, I would second and recommend that you come back. And hopefully, our staff can reach out to the county weed abatement program and hopefully try to get some more clarification. And I would hope the ability for particular residents to reach out and speak to the, you know, the, the relevant people at county as to how this came about.
Well, there's one complication with, with your plan, and that is that I will be out of town the last part of January. So in, in that case, if you want to proceed along that path, I move that, that meeting be deferred until the middle of February.
Well, I don't know if we can do that with regard to the various codes that control, but what I can say is that I would recommend, you know, corresponding with us at City Council.
Right, just submit something in writing that details this.
Right. And then we can take that into advisement if we're not able to, to move it. But, you know, again, I would like, you know, our staff to be able to coordinate.
Well, I'd like to be, I'd like to be able to question the weed abatement officer in person.
Have we closed public comment on this?
Yeah. So, I mean, technically, you shouldn't even be on that list for abatement in January because they won't find any, any issues. But, yeah, we, we can't be sure. But, yeah, I would suggest you send some correspondence. And it's true, you would not be able to confront him at that point. But as we recall, last time, there was not a lot he could do at the meeting, actually. And then we did vote to remove your property from the list that would require that the county abate it.
As you wish, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So should we, anyone want to move item four?
Councilmember Six, sorry.
Okay, second. Okay, please vote.
And the motion carries with Chow recusing.
Okay.
And Councilwoman Paul, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember.
So, Councilmember Chow can return if she's out in the lobby. Oh, welcome back.
So is item number five already taken off? Have we already...
That happened on your first...
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just don't recall a vote to remove item number five. Can, can we know who the alternate is that will be filled in?
Your Bicycle Pedestrian Commission alternate is Longo Gonga.
Okay. And if he doesn't accept, who is the next one?
The second person is Will Flewelling.
Okay, because I note that Alongo Gonga is currently on another commission. I don't know if he wishes to move.
This is true. So if he chooses to move, there would be a vacancy on that commission, in which case there is an alternate to fill that one as well.
Okay, I see.
One, one question. I had heard that a commissioner could serve on more than one commission at a time. I heard this from, I believe it was previous Councilwoman Patrick Quark.
That's not my understanding.
I've never heard of that.
So the tech commission and bike path do not have overlapping responsibilities. So I don't know.
This, this can be something I can look into.
Right, okay, thank you. We are on to item nine. Consider an out-of-cycle community funding grant for West Valley Communities.
What happened to seven and eight?
Oh, wait, did I miss? Oh, sorry, right. I was reading this wrong. Okay, yeah, we're on to item seven, the public hearing for the municipal code amendments to Chapter 19.80 to clarify development standards in the Plan Development P zoning districts, application number MCA 2019005. Do we have a staff report on this?
We do. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and the council members, and congratulations again to the Mayor and Vice Mayor, and thank you for our former Vice Mayor for your service as well. My name is Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. With me today, we have Puke Osh, the Planning Manager, who will be conducting a short preservation, 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 presentation for you, and will be available to answer questions as well.
and will be available to answer questions as well. This item is a part of the work program as directed by City Council to provide some clarification on the objective standards within our city's general plan and municipal code. This intent of this item is to address development standards in P zones. These are specifically identified for, for example, residential uses that with the P mixed-use districts to provide some clarification on the underlying requirements. With that, I will hand it over for Pugh for a more detailed presentation. We're here available for questions as well. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. I think Ben's already introduced the item, so I'll jump right in. This is a part of the current City Council work program, which is to clarify objective standards in the general plan and the municipal code. There were areas identified by staff in the City Attorney's Office, and there were items that were identified by council members, planning commissioners, and the public over the summer, which the council heard in September and October. On October first, the council directed staff to commence clarifications that were identified in phase one. There were some amendments that were proposed in the general plan, and then there were some amendments that were proposed in the municipal code, particularly development standards in the P zoning districts. The items in the general related to the general plan are going to be presented at a later time since there are certain technical issues with coming up with those. The Planning Commission heard the recommendation at its meeting on November twelfth and recommended adoption of the draft ordinance on a three oh two vote, and I'll go over the the recommendation right now. The city's zoning map has something called planned development zoning districts, which in essence are anything that has a P in front of the zoning designation itself. It allows for flexibility in the development of standards. The P is the planned development zoning district, and then there are referenced zoning categories within the parentheses. The planned development zoning district also requires the adoption of conceptual development plans, which are developed during rezoning to be a P district. In addition, after, once you're rezoned to be a P zoning district, a project comes in with a definitive plan to actually identify the standards that would be applicable to that particular project at that particular site. The proposed amendments are in line with our adopted general plan. Most future development is anticipated as mixed-use multifamily developments, and there are many policies within the land use element that support this concept. The proposed amendments can be, in essence, there are no changes that are being proposed to the allowed uses in the P zoning district. All we're trying to do is clarify the development standards in the P zoning districts, and includes some minor corrections and clarifications as well. For non-residential projects that do not include any housing units, there is no change to the way that projects are reviewed. The development standards would continue to be established via the adoption of conceptual and definitive plans as proposed by the applicant and approved, reviewed and approved by the city. For residential and mixed-use residential projects, that is where the change is being proposed. Projects may develop without the adoption of definitive plans, but if desired, definitive plans may also be applied for by an applicant. The proposed project must meet the existing standards in the adopted specific plans or conceptual zoning plans and other plans that the city has already adopted for that particular property. However, if a project comes in without a definitive plan, the project must meet the R-three zoning standards for the residential portions and any other standards that are applicable for the other reference zoning designations. If the standards conflict, then the most restrictive standard would apply. For example, in a P C G rez zoning district, the residential portion would have to follow the R-three standards. The commercial portion would have to follow the C G standards. And once again, to reiterate, if there are any conflicts, the most restrictive standard would apply. Staff also reviewed to see whether the proposed amendments will impede the city's ability to develop its regional housing needs allocation as anticipated by the housing element, but it found that amendments would continue to allow development of properties without the approval of definitive plans as long as they meet existing zoning standards that are established in the in the municipal code. And in addition, residential and mixed-use projects could continue to propose definitive plans if they so desired, as is currently the norm in P zoning districts. There is a third addendum that the city prepared, which found that the proposed amendments do not significantly change conditions identified in the twenty fourteen E I R, and no effect on the final E I R analysis or conclusions have occurred as a result of these proposed amendments, and the impacts remain less than significant. With that, staff recommends, and the Planning Commission does too, that the City Council conduct the first reading of the proposed ordinance adopting the third addendum to the twenty fourteen general plan E I R and amendments to chapter nineteen point eight oh of the municipal code. And with that, I end my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember questions or no comment cards from the public? Darcy?
So if you didn't have to use planning jargon, and you were trying to, you know, communicate this to a member of the public, what is being done here?
Good question. Thank you.
So when we looked at our general plan and our zoning maps, we found that in many cases, the general plan allowed residential uses, and a lot of our zoning is P development standards. But there are no specific P development standards, P meaning the planned development zoning district, because it allows flexibility. So flexibility is great when the city has the ability to to require certain standards as a discretion. However, with the slew of state bills that are coming forward, which say that we have to have objective standards in place for streamlined projects and other projects, you know, that come in within these, within the city, we found that there is, the city has the ability to tighten up the standards that that could be applicable to these areas. And as a result, staff felt that there was this area where we could tighten up, and this is, that is what is being proposed right now. The example that I I use is, for example, there are certain P zoning districts where we have certain objective standards but are missing, I hate to use the word missing, but there are none specified, for example, for private open space. So if you do come in with a residential project, there may not be a specific standard for private open space, for balcony or things like that. But with this, if if we do require objectively that a project has to meet the R-three standards, there are standards in the R-three zoning district for private open space. That's just one example, so.
Okay, okay. So i- is it fair to say that we're taking any designation of P and redesignating it to something else so that objective standards are now present in those areas?
No, no, we're just, we're allowing an option, in a sense. You could you could consider it in that in that frame. So right now, when a project comes in, under, as of December thirty-first, if a project came in, the city could review it and say, you know, you don't have a balcony, for example, for this particular housing unit, provide the balcony, and we'd like it to be, you know, an arbitrary number, two hundred and fifty square feet, for example. But come January first, we we may not have the ability to say that. And in order to at least have some minimum standards that a project must meet, all we're trying to allow is the opportunity for projects that could potentially come in under new state law to be able to point to something and say, you at a minimum have to have meet this particular standard.
Okay, so in those areas where you're adjusting the designations where there's a P, are you adding particular standards? Are you expanding?
I think our city attorney would like to speak.
Or are you replacing?
So let me let me try to say, we're not, we're not rezoning any properties, so the 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 P zoning will stay the same on all all the zoning maps and all the properties. What we're simply saying is that the code now says that if you have a P zoning, then the standards have to be set by a definitive plan that's approved discretionarily by the city. And what we're saying is that with these amendments is that if you have a P zoning, and there's a residential project or a mixed-use project that comes through, you have the opt, you still have the option to propose flexible development standards through a definitive plan that the city would have the discretion to approve. But if there isn't that discretionary approval process, then the default is the standards for multifamily housing that are set in the R-three zone or the standards for for the other referenced zone, for instance, for the commercials. So it's, so it's not changing the zoning, it's just saying that that these are the default standards if standards haven't been set some other way.
You're adding another layer. Okay, I actually followed all of that, and hopefully, that was that was clear as well to the public. But but thank you for that explanation. We're not, we're not changing the zoning. We're basically adding an administrative check, I guess, with regard to those situations in which we find ourselves not having discretion to, you know, make these, you know, particular decisions, but we do have default sets of standards in those particular situations.
That's correct.
All right, thanks.
Okay, yeah, that was very helpful to get the non-technical explanation, not just for the public but for us up here as well.
Next time, next time they contest it on me.
Okay, um, yeah, let's finish. I I got one card afterwards, but we'll wait until we're done discussing, so.
Okay, so.
Councilmember Chow.
I hope, I think Heather explained to me earlier, if you look at our zoning map, there we have P rez and other C G. Rez doesn't have a zoning code associated with it, but R-three has it. So we are trying to fix a hole, kind of, because right now, any place that's marked P rez doesn't have any standard that we can even apply. So we're not really adding a layer, it's like fixing. We don't want to make another rez standard, right? But then, so they are making a simpler change that say, if it's P rez, that's just comply with all the R-three standards, yeah. There are a lot, so there are a lot of terms in the municipal code that took me a while to understand from Heather. There is conceptual plan, definitive plan, specific plan. And so I'm a little confused by one of the slides. I think it says definitive plan may, I think it's this one, under residential and mixed-use rez projects, may develop without adoption of definitive plans. But if desired, definitive plans to be approved by the city may be proposed. So my understanding from reading the code, definitive plan is required. So I'm confused, here we say it may.
So actually.
If it's may, no one would submit it. Why do we even?
So it allows, that is what the standard is right now. People come in, they have, they can propose a definitive plan with flexible standards. If they're, if they're just coming in with a project that that meets all of our objective standards, and if it qualifies to be approved without any discretionary review, it just allows somebody to say, you know what, I'm going to build this project, I'm going to meet all the R-three requirements, and that's it. That that's the, it's setting the base for any project that comes in. So, but if they want to build a different product, and they want to have slightly different standards, it still allows an applicant to do that, but then there, the city has some discretion over that.
Right, so there's, so that bullet should have had maybe a little more saying, if they meet all the R, if they meet the standards, then they can develop but without the adoption of the definitive plan.
Correct.
Can, okay, I still don't understand. Let's say two cases. One case is normal, normal project with the city's approval, discretionary approval. Another is possibly streamlined project, right? So for the discretionary approval, is the definitive plan required or not?
Either way, I I guess either way.
So it's optional. Then why would anyone submit?
So when the plan comes in, when a, when a applicant submits a plan, that becomes the definitive plan. I guess the process is a little different. If if someone comes in with a compliant plan that meets all the R-three regulations, in essence, we could point that to that and say that is their definitive plan as proposed.
Wait, a project proposed, a project proposal which has all these plans set, so that's not definitive plan, right? What exactly is definitive plan? I'm confused.
So the definitive.
Is that project proposal also?
I guess it's a subset of sorts, so if if they're wishing to apply flexible standards for their project, then that discretionary approval of that plan, then that plan is a definitive plan. The definitive plan is what we would look to to make sure they meet these setbacks, whether, you know, that's twenty feet or fifteen feet. It's just what they're defining their their standards to be in that plan set.
But wouldn't we do that for for a project on plan set without definitive plan? We would check, do all this check also, right?
Correct, correct. So that's why I said, I mean, it's it's just a definition for purposes of distinguishing between the base zoning, which is the R-three zoning, and the the flexible zoning, which is the, which which might be proposed, which the city has discretion over. So it's just a semantics in terms of how.
I'm still confused. You say if the developer wished to have flexible standards, they should submit definitive plan.
Correct.
What do you mean by flexible standard?
It would be the same, it would be a plan set.
Can you give an example of flexible standards?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Can you give an example of what are flexible standards that developer can choose to have or not have?
The, for example, I'm trying to think the best example, side setbacks, I'm just using another one. Let's say R-three has a certain side setback, and the the developer says, you know what, there is a park next door to my property, and instead of the full, you know, the twenty-five-feet side setback that I'm required to provide, I, you know, I propose that I now have a fifteen-foot side setback, for example. And so that is the flexibility that the developer is asking for, and if it makes that project work better, and and the interaction between the park and that project work better, then the city could potentially consider that. So then that that difference in standard would just be reflected on the plans, and that would be the definitive plan.
So you mean definitive plan is a collection of exceptions they are requesting that goes beyond the current standard, right? Because if it's thirty feet, they are requesting fifteen, that's an exception. So that's the purpose of definitive plan?
Can I clarify something right now? The way the the city's general plan and the city's zoning code now says that on all of the P zones, we want flexible stand, we're not going to have any set standard. We want those to be proposed by the developer, and the city will consider them one project at a time. So the current code now is set up so that there aren't necessarily specified development standards for all these P-zone properties. So that's the state right now, that there's not specified standards for those for those P-zone stand, properties.
Wait, so currently, we do have setback standards in the general plan, like for the arterial street?
I should say, unless it's in the general plan, yes.
And the heart of the city's specific plan.
Or other specific plans, that's right.
So if that standard is set, it still has to be complied with. The definitive plan cannot make that flexible.
Yes, thank you for putting a finer point on that. That's correct, that we're, that the definitive plan would still need to be consistent with any specific plan in general.
Then what standards are flexible? I'm confused, because that's, your example was, there was, there could be a thirty-feet setback requirement that would be flexible, they can change that to fifteen. What's, where is that standard that they could make it flexible? If it's not in the general plan, not in the specific plan, where in our code is such standard will be flexible?
That's the point, is that there isn't a standard specified. That's the point, is that there isn't a standard specified currently. So for, so there are, for instance, the private open space, that in R3 zones, we have a standard for private open space. In P zones, unless there's a specific plan that sets the standard for private open space, there isn't a private open space standard. And so, uh, instead the P zone says, all those standard, those more detailed standards would be set through the proposed definitive plan that sets the standard for the site. Um, what we're simply saying now is that the default is the R, R3, the multifamily standards. Um, but if you want to deviate from those standards, you could submit a definitive plan proposal that has different standards.
Right.
And the city will consider that through a discretionary process.
Right, but we don't, we're not forced to, right. We would consider it. So we're putting in the, you know, we're basically closing what could be something that could be taken advantage of by a property owner based on the new state laws that are coming into effect.
That part I understand, that, uh, like private open space, there were no standards under P RES currently, and then the definite, uh, uh, current code, definitive plan could set, uh, standards for that. However, I still don't understand which part in our code, um, that any standard is considered flexible? That means there is a certain standard, but that that standard can be changed. Do we have anything like that?
So let me maybe, um, help understand that. First, so for example, um, if you have, um, property that's owned P RES, um, it it depends on the kind, the type of product that you're proposing. Um, so if a developer comes in and says, I want to build townhomes here in this, on this property, uh, we would probably look to, um, our R2 or our, you know, look to certain standards to see which part would work best for this property for the project proposed. Um, however, if they've come, they come in with attached multifamily, like an apartment building, uh, we would look to R3 to, for the the standards to begin with, but we don't necessarily hold them to those R3 standards. Any and all standards within the R3 zoning district, that's just the base, and then things could be reduced or increased depending on what works best for that project.
So that's right now?
Yes.
You mean, right now, there is, so, but then that means right now, there is no standard?
Correct.
Right.
So there is no flexible, there is nothing, there is, is there, is, does it exist anything that's?
It could be zero, the setback could be zero.
So we have is fixed standard in specific plan and general plan and no standard, just these two. We don't have a standard that's flexible.
I think if, if that's your point, I think everyone stipulates to that. You know, flexible is kind of a polite way in this kind of pre-whatever-you-want-to-call-it world, um, way of saying standardless, right? And and now that we have, for better or for worse, you know, a number of, you know, forces converging to create a situation where we're in a less polite world, you know, we're we're talking about possibly flexible standards, but really there there's just, there's just a situation where there are no objective standards. So, you know, typically, a developer that really isn't trying to push to the very limit of the edge of, you know, uh, what they can do under the 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 complete black letter of the law, would try to work with us, would try to work with our staff and say, hey, look, this, let's be reasonable here. But, you know, if you have someone that says, well, ah, I got you, you know, there's nothing here, so I can just do this and that and that. And so, I mean, it it becomes still a polite description, but yes, you are essentially correct, it is standardless. And so the whole point of this exercise is to make a reference to standards in those areas where we don't have standards.
Good. So I, I'm still trying to understand, when is definitive plan required for a project proposal?
So as written, where, uh, in, from a definition perspective, it's required when you are proposing standards other than the base standard.
But we have a base standards right now, so they, there is no need to even have definitive plan?
Um, so we are establishing the base standards, yes, with this amendment, but we are still allowing the opportunity to have other standards for different project, products. For example, the R3 standards are really for attached multifamily housing, but if someone comes in with a row house development, or a townhouse development, or a small lot, single-family development, the setbacks between properties on the site could be different. Um, because if they, they propose certain property lines around those small lot, single families, they may not be able to meet the side setback or other things. There could be reduced setbacks between their own properties, the properties that they themselves are developing. So those are the things that would all be, uh, uh, you know, reviewed and approved, uh, as part of that definitive plan and as part of that discretionary process.
And and to be clear, the the amendments also say that you still have to comply, comply with any general plan or specific plan standard that's already been set. So it's just where there's standards missing in those plans.
So for the, so right, with this amendment, the new project will have to, that's currently zoned, P RES, will have to comply with, um, current standard for R3 right now, but then they are, they can, they can choose just to use that standard and not submit a definitive plan. But then they can choose to submit one that has more relaxed standard than R3, and then it's the city's discretion to, whether to approve them or not, right?
Yes, exactly.
It, yeah, it would depend on the product type.
So no, someone won't be able to claim, because the definitive plan is discretionary, they don't, they 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 get to do whatever they want, they don't have to comply with the base standard.
I'll defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, we've, we've written that you have to comply with any, um, approved, approved plans and approved definitive plans and the default zoning. Um, and then people have the option to, um, if, if a project comes in and wants to request a definitive plan, they can, but the default zoning is the, is what's there.
So the council would have to approve that, then?
Right, and and, um, and under SB 35, you would have to comply with the default zoning.
Right, that's the, yeah, right, you'd have to comply with the default zoning, whereas now.
Or the default standards, I should say.
Right, where now, it doesn't exist in some cases. Okay, I have one speaker, Car, Jennifer?
Yes, I apologize, Mary. You guys were too fast for me, especially since we were starting. We weren't doing these initially. Um, anyway, uh, yes, Brave New World, it's more like a non-polite world. Um, thank you, actually, um, staff, thank you for explaining that. While I was sitting there, I've been kind of a little bit confused about this, but I did remember, long time back, that the PD or Plan Development was not as tightly crafted as residential was. I mean, we're going back 15, 10 years, and, um, it sounds like we've had to tighten up everything because the onslaught storm is coming, and it's SB 35. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, which I had been looking at AB 68 and 69, you talk about Brave New World. Um, I don't know if a lot of people realize that this, these were Mr. Chu, or Mr. Ting or Mr. Chu's ADU granny unit bills, accessory dwelling unit bills, which were signed by our governor several months ago. They actually allow ADU units in apartment complexes. Now, that just blew me out of the water when I read that. Um, so I'm assuming R3 is apartment complex. I think I wrote a letter to the city council when I found that information. I'm assuming that 68 and 69 become legal in January. This is the type of onslaught that we're going to have to ferry ourselves through due to the lack of judgment of our governor signing this bill. Now, maybe 68, 69 was a good intent, but no way should you be putting ADUs in apartment complexes. That is, I don't, I have no idea why that was even put in there, but how does that affect what we're talking about in this? Okay, so, okay, that's the law in January. Junior ADUs have no bathrooms. So you will allow people to, developers, to take apartment complexes that actually exist now. Shadow Oaks, the fountain, well, that's San Jose, that's their problem. Um, city, apartment complexes in Cupertino could have ADUs put in them, and junior ADUs have no bathrooms. So what are we creating here? Um, can we tighten this code up? That this is what, this is the road we're going down that we're being forced to go down, but I, I just, in my mind, how can you even put an ADU in an apartment complex? Who owns it? Who gets to rent it? Um, this is the type of strange logic that are in these bills. But yes, if you could discuss that, I would appreciate it, but believe me, where do you put it? In the carports, in the swimming pool? I don't have a clue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so bring it back to council, is there any more discussion?
Question that I would still ask is, if there was a eight-acre site in a P RES designation, and now, great, the R3 puts the objective standards in it, if the developer were to then say, I'm going to do an SB 35, are we sure that the SB 35 isn't going to negate that R3 designation?
Since that would be the city's objective standard, they would have to comply with it.
Correct. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this, the whole, you know, one of the purposes is to fix that issue.
Okay, one more question. So on the SB 35, with the concessions that they claim, are they, are the concessions going to be able to override the objective standards in the, uh, R3?
The short answer to that is yes. So, uh, this does nothing for state density bonus law. Um, that is, it is, that is a separate piece of legislation, um, that overrides any zoning standards that a city has, as long as the developer provides the appropriate level of affordable housing to, in order to, to, uh, be able to request that particular incentive or concession.
But even, even it were not SB 35, even it were just, uh, density bonus, if they were applied density bonus, um, so they are entitled for one or two or three concessions, and plus unlimited number of waivers, if they can prove that physically the project wouldn't fit without those waivers. So that means for density bonus project, they don't have to comply with anything. The R, none of the R3 standards would apply.
That is correct, though there is a limited number of incentives and concessions that they may request, um, but.
But the waivers are unlimited number, right?
And that is a state law, uh, uh, thing, that is not something the cities dictate.
But they have to prove physically that's required to, without a waiver, they cannot fit the project.
Correct.
Hmm, okay.
I just, I just wanted to follow up on, um, the member of the public, Jennifer's questions on AB 68 and AB 69. Does, um, the city attorney's office or staff have a sense of the junior ADU issue?
Yeah, we're, uh, we're currently working to update the city's ADU ordinance to comply with state law, um, and under, under the new state laws, there's, um, the city's required to bring its ordinance into compliance, when, whether that's before the end of the year or after the end of the year, um, there's not like a ticking clock there on that as far as.
There's not? I have heard that we had to be in compliance by the first.
Yes, we need to be in compliance. The point is that there's not necessarily an opportunity to avoid those state mandates if you do something earlier than the end of the year. Um, what, and what we're working on is to, um, to bring the city's ordinance into compliance as soon as possible, and then to also identify those opportunities that the city has to provide regulations within the flexibility that's allowed it under this new state law. And so that will be coming to council very soon.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I, I got the sense from the speaker that the, that the concern was that there would be added density upon something like an R3 or apartment complex, and that the, uh, ADU and junior ADU, um, statutes could be invoked in order to have these very kind of strange results of having, you know, uh, ADU units without bathrooms inside of an apartment complex, and, you know, yeah, what's the sense of that?
The speaker is correct, uh, junior ADU, can't speak, junior ADUs do not have to provide full bathrooms. However, they do have to provide, um, they can provide them as shared bathroom facilities. Uh, however, junior ADUs are also only allowed on single family, in single-family homes.
Okay.
Um, but ADUs are allowed in multifamily homes, and those do have to have full sanitation facilities.
And to clarify, junior ADUs are ones that are inside.
Correct.
The, the main structure.
Right.
Not standalone.
Not standalone, correct.
Okay, so that, that wouldn't apply to an apartment complex for junior.
That is my understanding at this point, that it does not apply to apartment complexes.
And do we have a sense of when we're going to be bringing that back to council with regard to, uh, the, the ADU, um, you know, municipal code?
We're hoping to be, uh, here at council in, um, early, late winter, still like, uh, February.
Okay.
Is what we're thinking.
So we're not going to be out of compliance with state if we make those adjustments after the, the calendar year?
We have to comply either way.
And the issue is that if, um, if an ADU proposal comes in before our ordinance is adopted, it, it must comply with the state standards.
Okay.
Or the states, the state standards, which our ordinance must conform to anyway, so.
Right, okay. Okay, so we're going to adjust our ordinance to become in conformance with state requirements, but the state requirements still control until that point?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Just to clarify, so JADU, junior ADU, does still require, uh, some bathroom, at least a shared, right?
Yes, shared, yeah.
So, uh, JADU without any bathroom is not allowed?
Correct.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Right, and the junior ADU is part of the, the house, it's not a separate structure.
Correct, it's essentially allowing a person to rent out a bedroom in their house, in essence, with, as long as it has a kitchen, it has to meet certain standards.
Right.
It doesn't need to have separate entrance?
I don't believe so. Um, it, it needs to have an entrance, but it could be, um, through the same entrance and then have its own little thing.
And I will say, we'll have a larger discussion about ADUs when that comes back, and just want to pull it back to how this relates to our planned development zones.
I still have some confusion about some terms, but Rod hasn't spoken, maybe, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I, I like, I appreciated Darcy's question a lot, because I had the same question during my staff presentation, but I'm on board with this fundamentally. It makes sense to, to be clear, um, not have ambiguities. We had nobody from the development community come tonight and say, no, no, you can't, you shouldn't. So, I mean, I think, I, it, I know we may all have a lot of questions, um, but, um, at least for me, I think, um, I'm supportive of, of clarity here, so, for what it's worth.
Okay, so first, the conceptual plan. I know that there is a conceptual development plan. We, if a, if a parcel wants to rezone to P-zone, plan development zoning, they are required to submit a conceptual plan for us to review and decide if we want to rezone. However, for the sites that the city have already zoned the P, P zoning, they, some of them don't have conceptual plan. So which part of the city do we have, um, the P zoning has conceptual plan, which doesn't?
So, um, the city has, uh, conceptual plans, uh, for South Deansa, um, which is the portion kind of on both sides of Deansa, between Bollinger and, uh, I want to say Sunrise. Um, there is the South Deansa, uh, conceptual plan that, uh, exists there. Uh, we have the North Deansa conceptual plan, which is between, roughly between Alves and 280 on the, uh, west side of Deansa. Uh, we have the, um, conceptual zoning plan on the, I think it's called the Saratoga Sunnyvale, South Saratoga Sunnyvale conceptual plan, which is roughly between 85 and Prospect. Um, those are the three conceptual plans that I can think of right off the top of my head. But then we do have other areas, uh, in the city. where we do not have conceptual plans for P zones. For example, Tintin Market at the corner of Laney and Bollinger. There is no conceptual plan for that site. So there, there's certain sites, standalone sites like that, which maybe comprise of three or four properties.
Okay, so conceptual plans are, what exactly is the content? So we have definitive plan, conceptual plan. Is there a definition somewhere? I mean, for a common person reading our municipal code, where can they find definition of, here is a conceptual plan, what should be the content? Here is a definitive plan, what should be the content?
There is not. It is part of the process of application and review. A conceptual plan in essence can encompass one property all the way to many properties. It is, it is, does not go as far as a specific plan goes because a specific plan, under state law, is mandated to have certain pieces incorporated into it, including infrastructure, funding and other requirements in it. But a conceptual plan is, is a little less, it has fewer requirements. So, but the conceptual plan is, it has standards and it has policy. For example, the South D'Anza conceptual plan, the city envisioned that it would mostly be commercial and office uses in that area. And so it has, it has standards for commercial and office buildings, but it doesn't necessarily address residential developments. And so there are certain, so this kind of is trying to address that issue that there are, there aren't any residential standards in that conceptual plan. But if residential development does come in, then there, there is some default.
So conceptual plan is also objective standards?
It could have objective standards in it, yes.
Can, can you just give a very brief overview of how conceptual plans are enacted? Are they done by resolution? Are they done by our staff?
They're, they're done by resolution. They're, they're, they still have, it's discretionary review because it is part of, it's essentially rezoning the property to establish those standards.
Okay, and what's the process for arriving at a conceptual plan for our city? Does it go through the planning commission and then go to the city council?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the process?
Correct, that is the process.
And, and how does that get initiated?
The developer could come in and say that, you know, or the city could initiate it to say, for example, we have, in our general plan, we, we have all the entire homestead area and there is a policy or strategy in there that talks about creating some sort of a plan for the homestead area. And similarly, another of the objective standard work program items that we identified was expansion of the North D'Anza conceptual plan to encompass the eastern side of D'Anza, which is not part of that plan right now.
Okay, and if someone were to pull up the applicable, if any, section of our municipal code, would they be able to find a conceptual plan defined and this process that you're describing, described within the code?
It is within this code. It talks about how the conceptual plan is applied for and reviewed.
I'm sorry, which code?
It's part of chapter nineteen point eight.
Oh, got it, okay.
But that's only if a site is to be rezoned, that's.
It's, I think it's zoning.
For a site that's currently zoned, the P zoning, what's the process to propose a conceptual plan? Like the current South, North D'Anza conceptual plan? Who initiated it? The city or the property owner?
Existing North D'Anza plan, the city did at that point back in the nineteen seventies.
So the city can initiate that?
Correct.
Developer, the property owner can initiate that too?
Yes. And that, so the code has actually been clarified. So it talks about pre-zoning, re-zoning, or establishment of zoning to a P zoning district. And, and that's how you would apply for a conceptual plan.
That part I understand. It's the site that's currently existing P zoning. How conceptual plan could be proposed? So you are talking about, and we would be looking at maybe adopting more conceptual plans for those P zoning, P, P zones that are not, that currently do not have conceptual plan?
Correct, if the city desires that, then they could certainly initiate that.
Okay, and then another thing, the definitive plans. I think the last part of the municipal code, I spoke to Heather about that. The last, very last paragraph, I, it was very hard for me to, a common person to understand. So it reads, "Prior to any development within a planned development zoning district, the applicant must obtain a, a development permit and a required or requested definitive plan approving the development pursuant to the requirement of chapter nineteen point one five six." So for me, I couldn't, I can understand obtaining a development permit from the city, but I was confused with, how would they obtain a definitive plan from the city if they are proposing a project? So we tried to rephrase that.
Yeah, and so the, the clarification was to have the sentence read, "Prior to any development within a planned development zoning district, the applicant must obtain a development permit approving the development and approval of a required or requested definitive plan pursuant to the requirements of chapter nineteen point one five six." And so this is simply a slight rewording of that sentence, which doesn't change the staff's proposal. And, and staff agrees with that rewording, to clarify it.
I think you missed an original phrase. So the original code reads, "The applicant must obtain a development permit approving the development pursuant to something," and the rephrase you, the approving the development.
And then it would say, comma, "and approval of a required or requested plan, comma, pursuant to the requirements of chapter nineteen point one five six," so that.
So you do have the appro, you do have, okay. So applicant must obtain a development permit approving the development.
Yes.
That's as it was before?
Yes.
And then we are adding the definitive plan? Okay.
Is there any way to put the language up on the overhead for just maybe ten seconds? So we can take a look at it? And we being the public as well?
Can you zone out or do I do that? Sorry.
Yep, you, you got it.
Too much.
Oh, oh, I see, I do have, thank you, Ben. And now you can all see how poor my handwriting is.
So noted. Stipulated.
Next time I'll be on warning that it might be on an overhead.
Okay, okay, got it. All right, so, so you're basically getting rid of your first red line.
Or just moving it.
Right, right, exactly. And, and.
And adding the approval.
Right, it was, it was confusing, right? Because that, that, that made it sound like the city was giving the developer a definitive plan, which of course is not happening. Okay, and, and just to clarify, your, your, your writing states and approval.
Of a required or requested definitive plan.
Definitive plan, okay, great.
So definitive plan is also another term that I couldn't fly, quite find the definition. So how would applicant, a project applicant be able to figure out what they need to do? What, what they could get even from a definitive plan? Maybe they would like to have that, but they don't, I can't see from the code the purpose of that. Can we possibly clarify it, maybe through a staff clarification?
So chapter nineteen point twelve, which is the administration chapter, includes the requirements for application for plans, in essence. It doesn't necessarily include the word definitive plan, but you could call it a term of art for purposes of this use here to signify, to, to kind of identify what is considered a discretionary approval of standards that are other than the base standard. So it would just be shown on the plans. It would just show, you know, we're proposing ten feet and fifteen feet. It would just be the plan set.
Oh, so definitive plan, we were, we are not expecting a separate document?
No.
It would, it, it's part of the project application?
Correct, it is the plan set.
It is the.
And the project description if there is one.
Plan set.
Yes.
How, how long, how long to your knowledge have we been using this terminology internally for definitive?
Since this code's been here. I think it was first adopted in the ninety, eighties, I think.
Okay.
So maybe the early nineties.
I mean, but something like conceptual plan or specific plan, those show up in the code. But definitive plan is really just jargon for, you know, a, a set of plans that aren't necessarily compliant with everything that we're, or, or.
Right, it's not an official term, I guess.
Right, it's, it's.
It's a term of art, honestly. It's not really a, a defined term in the code as much as saying that it's, the plan set that you provide us will be called, is the definitive plan. It's the, it's the plan set that provides the, yeah, yeah, it's, it's the. Right.
So really, it, it should be kind of called self-defined plan as opposed to, it's definitive in the sense that something's being.
Or just the plan.
Well, for example, the, the conceptual plan could say that the minimum setback is twenty feet and the developer could come in with the definitive plan and say, I'm not proposing a thirty-foot setback instead. So it's just the plans. It's the plans that they propose. So it's just defining the standards for that development for that property.
Kind of like the Westport project. The first page or second page has this summary of, here is a height limit that we are requesting seventy-five feet, not forty-five. And here are the concession, we, we, they, they want to, so that's kind of their definitive plan?
It's just the site plan. It's nothing special. It is.
But the site plan is very detailed. It has like a floor plan for every floor. Is that what we expect in a definitive plan?
Yes, it is the plan set that we would hold the developer accountable to when they, when they come in with building permits. That's what we're gonna look to and say, hey, you told us you were gonna put thirty feet here. You gotta fix your building plans.
So it is the project plan?
It is the project plans, yes. It's just a term of art to call it a definitive plan.
So it's, it's defined in chapter nineteen point twelve, but that chapter doesn't use this term?
Correct.
Is it possible that we make this consistent so that a common person reading our code wouldn't be so confused?
Absolutely, we could say the project plans.
Right, I think we're fixating on this because we're thinking of specific plan and thinking that definitive plan is some official term when it really isn't.
I thought it's like a version of conceptual plan that's more subset.
Well, and we had discussed that there could be an administrative clarification that the community development director would.
Maybe just call it a project plan.
That says that the definitive plan is the project plans that provide, you know, the standards for the site.
Could we handle these kind of details in the second reading? Exactly.
No, but I, but I, that's why I'm suggesting an administrative clarification.
Then we have to do a new first reading if we did that. But I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, we just need some clarification somewhere. Not, it doesn't have to be in this chapter.
I mean, it's, it's a great point. I mean, you, you know, the way that the language was used, definitive plan was used within your presentation. It made it sound like, it, it's, it's a floating definition, right? I mean, it's kind of like, well, you know, in those, in, in those instances where there aren't really objective standards, you know, to begin with, the defend, the definitive plan is used to kind of define, you know, the, the standards that the developer's kind of self-imposing. And so, you know, it, it could be an artifact of a time when things were a little bit more flexible, right? Things were a little bit more, more polite. But, you know, I, I think, I think it's, it's a good point, you know. And maybe if we're really kind of defining out what we mean by particular standards, using a term like this might be, you know, something that we would reexamine as well.
I also kind, I also kind of afraid when we don't define a term, someone would come in and say, you didn't define, define it. So we are going to use this definition from this other state building code or this other state law. And we won't be able to say, oh, that's not what we meant.
So what we can do is possibly in our application form, kind of have that administratively set out that the definitive plan comprises of all the plans that are, you know, required for any project plan set. We can certainly do that, just to clarify, as clarification. And as long as it's published, we can point to it and, and require.
Or, or if it continues to create confusion because unfortunately definitive has a different meaning also.
Right.
So it has an implication when you put it with plan. So maybe we, staff could make some administrative adjustments and just change it for clarification.
Or can we just not use the term here? It can, is it possible we just don't say definitive plan here? We just say plan, project plan?
That's something that staff could change administratively.
No, not right now, Ray. It's okay, we can consider for the future for clarification.
Right, yeah, I mean, right now, I mean, we need to do this today so we can do the second. We need to do the first reading today and the second reading in two weeks.
Now, this has been really educational. I, I mean, I, I think we might have further discussion, but at this point, I'd really like to request that the city clerk conduct the first reading of ordinance number eighteen.
Yes, thank you.
One last question. And that is, you know, I, it all sounds pretty good, the discussion that we just had. I, I still get a little bit concerned, the SB thirty-five ministerial approval as opposed to these definitive plan, you know, and the city's participation in that versus SB thirty-five ministerial approval. Is the SB thirty-five ministerial approval gonna make some of this moot?
No, because that is what we're trying to address. We are trying to address the, the, the lack of standards, so to speak, or, or the flexibility that we had in establishing standards. We're trying to make sure that it's objective, that there is no subjectivity involved in determining what those standards are. So we're establishing what those objective standards are with this process. So that we're not making anything moot. So SB thirty-five cannot make that moot. It would actually strengthen the city's position to say, you have to meet the standards within the R three zoning district for your residential project.
Right, but they still get the, well, of course, well, they would get the density bonus no matter what and they still get the concessions and the waivers. But that is not, you know, even without SB thirty-five, they get the density bonus.
Correct, and that would be applicable to discretionary projects as well.
Right. And, you know, the density, you know, personally, if we get the affordable housing as a result of the density bonus, then, you know, then we're getting something beneficial in exchange for that.
I'd like to reiterate the request, the city clerk, conduct the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash two one nine one.
Sure, this is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash two one nine one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino adopting the third addendum to the twenty fourteen general plan final EIR and amendments to chapter nineteen point eight zero planned development P zones of the Cupertino municipal code to clarify development standards in P zones.
Thank you, I move that ordinance number.
Wait, with the amendment, Heather just.
I'll, I'll stick that. So, um, thank you very much. I, I move that ordinance number nineteen dash two one nine one be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof with the changes to the last paragraph of the draft ordinance to chapter nineteen point eighty and section nineteen point eighty dot oh five oh development permit articulated by the city attorney and with the extra edits placed up earlier in this item on the overhead.
And council member Paul, there was an additional desk item that was an amendment to section four of this ordinance that just added standard, standard language to our, to our, to the, to the enactment in the ordinance to, to state that to the extent the provisions of this ordinance are substantially the same as previous provisions of the Cupertino municipal code, those provisions shall be construed as continuations of those provisions and not as an amendment to a readoption of earlier provisions. This is this standard language that's in our ordinance is adopting municipal code changes that was inadvertently admitted in, in the draft ordinance that was presented to, with the agenda. And so I'm, would like to suggest a friendly amendment to the motion to.
Certainly, well, there's no friendly amendment required. I haven't finished with the motion. I haven't finished with the motion. And so I'll, I'll go ahead and hereby add that language. I, I will make a request, again, for the sake of transparency, that we spend a few seconds just to place this up on the overhead projector for the sake of the public, to be able to see what you're referring to. So, it's the yellow highlighted portion of this. So, okay, great. So, that's added and that's my motion.
Great, I'll second it. Vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, so we've been going for about two hours, why don't we take five minutes before we move on to item eight?